Item 10B, you received first quarter financial update report as of September 30th, 2017, and adopt a resolution amending the 1718 operating capital improvement budget, approving carryover 1617 purchase order encumbrances and other first quarter budget amendments. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to review the first quarter financial update as of September 30th. I would also like to review with the council two or several budget amendment items and also to discuss several budget-related items that I think are useful information for the City Council. The adopted budget incorporates the estimated revenues and planned expenditures for all funds for city operations and the capital improvement program. This first quarter update contains really only limited data through three months, and because of the nonlinear nature of various revenues and expenditures, while one would assume generally 25 percent of revenue is received and 25 percent of expenditures, in the grand scheme, that's generally true, but in some revenue categories and expenditure categories, there could be a variance. So what I'd like to do is review with the City Council just some very summary information and to discuss various variances so that the council is well aware of the first quarter activity. So total general fund revenues are projected to equal $43,600,000, with expenditures, you'll see on the next page, the bottom line, of $45,200, a difference of $1.6 million. The large variance between revenues and expenditures for this year really centers on the one-time and ongoing enhancements that the City Council approved on the expenditure side for 1718, and that again explains the difference between the revenue and expenditure amounts. In looking at the city's major revenues, you see that property tax and sales tax is about $16,000,000, $17,000,000, which is together nearly half of the total general fund revenues of $43 million. For this chart and for your report, the property tax line item includes what is generally secured property tax, but also includes property transfer tax revenues that are a relatively small portion of the total, but those two items are included in property tax. The percent of budget is zero, and again, the council is well aware that property tax revenue almost exclusively comes to the city in December and in April when the county remits property taxes that are paid in those two months. Again, we'll just point out for the council, and this was discussed in the budget meetings, of the $9 million, just under $2 million of property tax in 1718 is coming in and is really property tax that is offsetting tax increment that the redevelopment agency used to receive, so there is a fair amount of that total does accrue what the redevelopment agency was receiving before. Sales tax revenue is budgeted at $7.6 million. This is $191,000 more than in 1617. Again, it's very early to have a trend line. The Finance Department did have an opportunity to meet with Muni Services, our sales tax consulting firm, and based on their knowledge, and they're looking at the financial trends over the first three months. They expressed high confidence that the city will in fact receive very close to the budgeted amount in sales tax. On the expenditure side, oh, I just go back for, well, I was just going to mention on the departmental revenues, departmental revenues are up $167,000 compared to 1617, and in particular, in the police, fire, and building departments, revenue is up in those three departments. On the expenditure side, was just going to point out again, at the bottom in the first column is the $45,200,000 shown as total expenditures. The percent is 26 million, I'm sorry, 26 percent was spent in the first quarter of 1718 compared to 25 percent last year. I did want to point out, in staff's continuing efforts to reduce expenditures to the lowest level possible, we have an obligation of about a little less than $4 million that we pay to CalPERS for the employer unfunded crude liability. This is typically a monthly payment that we pay to PERS. This year, for the miscellaneous employees, we prepaid that expense this year. PERS is charging a 7 percent interest over the course of the year, and by prepaying, we were able to save about $144,000. So it's a significant amount, but that was something that we didn't have the opportunity to, we did it on the safety side last year. This year, we had an opportunity to do it on the miscellaneous side also, so we took advantage of those savings. On the enterprise accounts, revenues are up, except for stormwater, which again, we receive stormwater revenue as part of our property tax, so we have not received anything yet. We will next month in December, but revenues for water, wastewater, and cable are all running ahead of last year, and again, that's reflecting rate increases that the City Council In the internal service funds, no specific comment, I would just say, under the self-insurance fund, expenditures are substantially lower in 1718, and that is just a timing anomaly. Our property and liability premiums that we pay to ABAG that more typically are paid in the first quarter of the year were not paid until October 26th, so they have been paid, but they're outside of this timeframe, so we are really very close to the budget Those are the general comments that I wanted to make about the financial report. You do have a resolution related to budget amendment, and you have on the dais an updated resolution. Really wanted to improve the presentation of the resolution, and so there's two columns to show incoming revenues and outgoing expenditures in two separate columns, so we have done that. There was actually, you'll, just a full disclosure of the differences, there was a item on the original resolution that was asking the council to appropriate funds for a fire station that we've removed for now, depending on council direction. If the council wants us to do that, we can, but in the resolution update I gave you, that has been removed, and the only other change to the resolution is to make more clear, within the resolution itself, the carryover amounts for a variety of purchase orders. So for the carryover purchase orders, this is again, when the city issues a purchase order, there is an encumbrance established, and those encumbrances run out technically as of June 30th, but there are still purchase orders that if, for a fire truck, it might take a 10-month delivery period if the purchase order is outstanding on June 30th, and those funds haven't been paid yet. We put into the resolution the City Council re-appropriating that money from, in this instance, the 1617 year into the 1718 year to pay those encumbrances once that actual payment is made. So it's a, these are all approved amounts by the City Council in 1617, and just getting council authorization to carry those over into 1718 for payments to be made. If there's any, there's a detailed listing of all of the purchase orders in your agenda packet. It is just summarized in the resolution, but there's a detailed listing in the packet. If the council has any specific question, would be glad to answer those questions. Also in the resolution, as we do each quarter, there's a recap of other budget changes. Virtually all of the changes have previously been approved by the council over the course of the quarter. I did point out in the staff report, and would also, would just point out here at the meeting, two of the budget amendment items were in fact not previously reviewed, and so I wanted to point those out. One of those is finance erroneously misunderstood direction in the budget process, and included in the budget, a change in one of the positions in the wastewater, changing the position from a pump mechanic to a maintenance worker. That was not the intent of the city manager in the proposed budget, and so we are asking the council to reverse that item in the budget. It would be an additional cost of $26,000, so the budget reduced the appropriation by $26,000 for an incorrect position title, and so this would just restore the wastewater positions as they were in 1617. And the second item is to include in the accessible pedestrian ramp at various locations project in the capital improvement budget, there is $288,000 carryover for ramps. During the City Council discussion, there was a direction to include $50,000 additional funds for additional ramps as part of that project, so that I've included that in the resolution, again, depending the council desiring that item to be included. So those are, that is the financial report, and that is the budget amendment items. There's, the city manager asked that I just review with the council the current status of the capital improvement reserve fund, because there has been some changes to what was presented in the budget, and wanted to just present to the council the current status of the capital improvement reserve, and get direction from the council if they would like some change made. In the slide and in the staff report, you see the capital improvement reserve. I just might mention that in, I would describe the capital improvement reserve as being a little bit different than some of the other reserves the city has established, because looking at the general fund reserve, for instance, 25 percent of operating expenditures, I believe that reserve is set up intended to have that reserve amount, except for some extraordinary amount, to always remain there as a rainy day fund. This reserve is a little bit different, to the extent, I don't believe there's an expectation that funds go into this reserve and then are held for indefinite periods of time for rainy day. In fact, this reserve is set up in order to fund capital projects, and so money goes into the reserve with the expectation, within some reasonable amount of time, the council is identifying projects and expenditures in fact take place. So what I wanted to point out is, if you look at the left column in the capital improvement reserve, you see a beginning balance of, for 1718, a beginning balance of $5.3 million and a projected ending balance of $2.1 million. And this was, that is what was in the budget, and that's, at that time, that's what we anticipated. But you can see the 1718 amended column, and it's estimated, because we're projecting, based on what we know today, an ending fund balance that would be negative of $240,000. And I would just like to walk through, just very briefly, some of the component parts of that. The beginning fund balance of $5.3 million was at that level because finance and putting it together, the budget, anticipated that there would be an infusion from general fund surplus, as there has been in the last several years, of $1 million. In past years, there's been infusion into this fund from between $1 and $3 million over the last couple of years, and finance anticipated $1 million going into the fund that would create this higher fund balance. With a council direction to use surplus from 1617 for $1.6 million in enhancements, did not allow or did not permit this million-dollar transfer to take place. So that is why the $5.3 million, in fact, turned out to be $4.3 million as a beginning fund balance. Then you see the revenues, and there were transfers in this year, $373,000. These are various capital projects that were completed, and there was approved budget remaining, that remained unspent, that the actual project expenditure was less than what was budgeted, and so, back to the capital reserve, $373,000 was put back into the fund. And then transfers out, including in the first quarter, we had projected that the transfers out would be $3.1 million, and in fact, the transfers out were $4.1 million. And these were both, as we closed the books and precise the expenditures as of June 30th, it was corrected a little bit, but even the bigger change was, in the first quarter and included in the budget amendment, you will see there are two capital projects that the council has taken almost $800,000 in the first quarter out of the reserve in order to fund the projects, one of them being the Florida Avenue Park as an example, and the other is the Mills Park Neighborhood Streetlight Conversion. When the budget was put together, those, being the prime examples, those projects were not anticipated, and so it results in the higher $4.1 million. There's sort of a note that's highlighted there, in addition, and it's receivable to the cable fund, but there's $991,000 the council has directed to be lent to the cable fund while it doesn't actually reduce fund balance. It's something that's not spendable, so I wanted to just show it on the chart that that $991,000 is something that could not be spent. So looking at it in this way, the fund balance for the capital improvement reserve is a I would say there's not a requirement that the council act at this point to change that, but I think, and actually, there's an item on the agenda tonight that would transfer an additional amount, I believe $70,000, $70,000 or $80,000 additional from the reserve to a capital project. It would be staff's recommendation, though, that there are three projects that have taken money out of the capital reserve, and all related to the stormwater, to stormwater fund, and have been moved from the reserve to stormwater fund, and the Public Works Director would recommend actually deferring these three projects. If the council agreed that that would be a good direction, we could transfer, if these projects were deferred, meaning, at this point, defunding those projects, and this would be the City Park Stormwater Improvement, the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin Improvement, and the Green Infrastructure Development Plan. If, in fact, these three projects were defunded, the adjusted fund balance for the reserve would change from being $240,000 negative to a positive $1,009,000 positive fund balance. So this would be a way to correct this deficit, and the council would have the opportunity at any time that it seemed appropriate to refund those projects, but that would be a recommended way to in fact adjust that, adjust that change. I have not included these three in the budget resolution. If the council directed that all three or any of those in fact be defunded, the recommendation would be that in the next quarter, we would actually do that if you gave us the direction, and when you act with the next budget amendment, that change could be made. The only other budget-related item that wanted to address to the council is again, during the budget, well, including, included in the budget were proposed major enhancement programs. If you recall, there were two programs for, a downtown enhancement program and a neighborhood enhancement program, that together, the funding was about $1.6 million to undertake both of those enhancement programs. They were presented to you as two separate programs for downtown and enhancements. The council did have a discussion, and part of the discussion centered on, was there a way to adjust the enhancements down in order to lower the cost? Staff has reviewed the earlier recommendation and believes that the total cost, either individually or in components, or by individually or in total, could be reduced by about 30 percent. We have included in the packet the complete discussion of those enhancements, and again, I think there could be a 30 percent reduction in costs related to those two. So at this point, again, just since we're talking about budget and budget amendments and budget items, wanted to bring this back to your attention again, and staff is really just seeking the City Council's interest or direction in further refining one or both of these, or just to get more direction from the council as far as what you would like us to do. And that concludes my comments, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim?
To the chair.
Rick.
So, as you said, we usually have a bigger carryover in the general. This, I believe, is about $92,000-plus dollars that we have carryover. Is that correct?
Sorry, nevermind.
This time, we have about $92,000-plus dollars that's being carried over from the general fund that usually goes to the reserves. Am I correct?
I believe that's...
Okay. And as you alluded, we used to have a greater sum that would go, and these are projects that, would I agree, it's not for a rainy day, but it is to ongoing projects and activities that we need in this community. So the few questions I have is the three items that you listed as far as possibly holding off in order to redirect the funds back. They were brought up for a purpose, so what happens for the delay? What is the detriment to the community, to the neighborhood, to the area, the rising costs potentially? Then also, I'm looking further down the road, but when we talk about the capital reserves, these are items that we should be putting monies toward, or having a funding source, shall we say, and that's only the allocation through the general fund, which that means we need to have more revenue. So to me, this is something that's going to need to be addressed, because this is what is about our infrastructure. This is what's about, and I mean infrastructure by facilities and other projects. So we're finding ourselves to a point that we really have to examine this, I think, closely. You talked about the $1.6 million that was brought up in a study session for possible enhancements or improvements. I believe the, if not, the majority of unanimous council had said, that's probably a lot to bring on, and probably too costly, and to come back and have that reexamined. So I would say immediately, the different look at it of a 30 percent reduction or what have you, and I think the council was guiding toward that. But again, the project's being delayed, what does that do? And am I incorrect about, right now, the only way we're going to get a more to the capital reserves is having a funding source, or having monies out of the general fund put aside for that? I asked you a lot, I know.
I would say everything you've said is generally true.
Well, see, that's all we have to do here.
I mean, the, I would say the capital, the capital reserve, by design and by reality, is sort of the funding source of last resort. And I think, from a budgetary point of view, for instance, the three projects that we're talking about are all devoted to stormwater. I mean, I think in the perfect world, the stormwater fund would pay for stormwater projects, you know, so, but the stormwater funding is very, very limited, and you know, has really no ability to do substantial capital projects. So to that extent, you know, I think over-reliance on the general fund to do all sorts of things is, it's a nice to have when the general fund is able to do it, but on an ongoing basis, it's a challenge for the general fund to do that. I think the, you know, if you'd like to go through the three projects, I don't think I'm the person, I think the Public Works Director would have to address, you know, the status or the thoughts around those three projects.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. In regards to the three projects, as the Finance Director mentioned, the Green Infrastructure Plan, the plan is to be scheduled, or needs to be completed by September of 2019, so we do have some flexibility. So we do have some flexibility in terms of completing the, the plan. In terms of the, the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin, that was one of the project that was identified in stormwater master plan. The city is actually looking and coordinating with CCAG right now to try to figure out whether Caltrans may be able to provide some fundings for that because as their flows from Skyline Boulevard flows, you know, towards the storm drain system into the, the canyon basin, that's something that we're actually looking at. So we're thinking that, we're thinking that the, the project can be deferred until further discussion with Caltrans and see whether they can maybe contribute some of their money to, in order to, for us to get the plan established for the, to the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin. And regards to the, the City Parkway, stormwater, stormwater park, that's the, the channel that's there on City Parkway and it's been there, I believe, for the longest time. And, and so I know there was an interest in trying to get that buried below grade and the city had seeked consultant to design that as part of the, the Crystal Springs sewer replacement project. And the product, the design has been completed. It was about a 20, $25,000 design effort for the, to bury the, the channel below grade. But the cost for construction of that is, it's quite expensive and I think we had budgeted about $850,000 for that. $850,000 is what was budgeted for that, for that work. You know, that's one project that can possibly be deferred until further, you know, fundings are available in a stormwater funds in the future.
Jimmy, before you sit down, thank you. Since we are undertaking redesigning and rebuilding or building a new swimming pool recreation center in that area, can't that, all the planning for that be folded into it since we're going to have to be looking at parking and all the other kind and traffic flow and all sorts of other things? Might undergrounding the storm drain be part of that? Or at least be the concept as we go forward with the planning of everything else?
That is a possibility for us to look at. I know that we were concentrating within the, the rec center and the swimming pool area, but not, you know, beyond the extent of that footprint, but that's something that we can look into as well.
And it might be able to, you know, the funding for the recreation center and all of that might be behalf of it and then we can do the other half or some kind of combination. So that might be something that is actually better to wait and do that with the construction of the rec center. So that's just a thought that I had.
Marty?
Some budget stuff.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for all the detail and all the things that you said. I think one of the things that always surprises me, and I've been doing this a long time and I don't know why I never mentioned it before, when we do projects and when we say, oh, this is great, let's do it and the council approves it and we go forward with it, one thing we don't do is say, okay, the money, we do say the money's coming from general fund reserve. What we don't do is say the reserve fund is now at this point, 2 million, 1 million, whatever it is, and if we do this particular project, it's going to take X amount away and leave us with this. So I think throughout the year, we often seek out things to do and embrace doing them and fund them through the general fund reserve, but maybe don't really realize what that is doing to the fund at that moment. So I'd like to suggest going forward that that'd be part of how we do our budget and how we do the staff reports when we are spending general fund money. So we have a good grasp of what direction we're going in. So that's a suggestion. The other, the other thing kind of to fold into what Councilman Rico Medina was saying is even if we defund these three projects, the other thing I think we should be looking at is what is our priority with them? Do we just drop them totally or do we say, well, the next time we have money, this is the next thing we are going to do? And maybe that's something that staff needs to help us with. Is it more important to do the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin regardless if CCAG can get the money or Caltrans can give us the money or not? But when we're looking at defunding things or funding them, what is the priority for them? And then do we say, okay, it may take three years, so we'll set aside $100,000 a year for it? Or some, some kind of more structured payment of these kinds of things? So maybe you could come back if the, if that's a consensus of the council to look at some kind of structure like that? Maybe you could come back with something if that's.
Yeah, I would just say that I, I think, you know, staff's recommendation was that the council takes specific action in the second budget amendment, second quarter budget amendment. And I would concur and say, as part of that action would be the priority that you're describing, so that when funds became available, it would be clear in advance which, which ones the, the priority would, would be. And as the director indicated, one of the projects does have a 2019 timeline. Well, that, that's not very far away, so, so I think the priority would be very, very helpful.
Yes, but, but also in going forward in the future, keeping that kind of structure in mind for all our projects.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And on, on your comment regarding the staff report, I think it's an excellent idea and finance can include that or when, when the fiscal impact is reported, that'll be additional information that could be provided.
So we're facing the harsh reality of our Asian city. Our revenues were okay in the past. We were able to fund, starting in 2013, for everybody that doesn't have a copy of the report, this is when they first began the capital improvement reserve in 2013. And we've been drawing that down. And our revenues used to be able to spill over and fill that bucket up, but that's not happening anymore. We've had to deal with these unbudgeted, unforeseen expenses with our lights going out, right? That's part of where it came from, from a box covert that had to get fixed. These emergency funding mechanisms were important to have. Well, we're not going to have that without transferring this money in to, to fill in that bucket a fifth of what it used to be. And we're going to get other things down the road where things are going to break that it's not in our budget, but we need to find a way to pay for it. So we're going to have to face the reality here really, really soon of how we're going to increase our revenues. And I think we're dancing around the subject just a little bit about how all these additional storm drain requirements are looming, that we have to treat stormwater to a really high standard. And if we fail to do that, we'll probably be sued like before. So tonight, we don't have the time to go into all the things that we need to do. We have a, a new council coming in that is going to have to get ready to, to make some very tough choices. Tonight's choices are relatively easy. We need to defer some of the projects based on the recommendation from our director and staff. But we have to be mindful that how are we going to deal with this? You know, our streets continually to be damaged with each storm and with the wear and tear. We're 30 million in unfunded, I believe, repairs that are needed to maintain, in, in, maintain our roads in five years. We, we need another 30 million. I think that's, is that about right? So where's this money going to come from? How, how are we going to do it? And we're going to need to increase our revenue and so I'm in favor of, of how we're going to proceed with making this transfer and, and it's, it's not good news, but it's reality. We have an old city. It's spread out and those are my comments.
Ken.
Let me first say that Mr. O'Leary, I know this is, even though this is probably the least interesting report that you give throughout the year, it's, it's.
I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, there's zero, there's zero property tax. I mean, he doesn't, I mean, we don't know, we can't gauge, you know, how good the city, how prosperous the city's going to be is tax wise. But come the next report, which unfortunately, I may have to sit in the audience.
I would like to point, point out that the vice mayor has never missed an opportunity to point out how boring this report is. So thank you very much.
I mentioned that it's not as exciting as the report that you will be giving at the next, the next report, which I'll probably be sitting in the audience or watching comfortably at home. In reference to what my colleague just said, and it's, it's important to say that we've, the city has been through a lot in the last 20 years. And I'd just like to say that we are in the middle of some prosperous times. And we seem to make it, you know, in the last 20 years, we probably not had as many, as much prosperous times as, as non-prosperous times. We've had more challenges, but we've still managed to move forward and get things done and get things repaired and plus take care of our staff. We hit rock bottom during the recession like many, many people did, many cities did. But yes, we do, and this next council and future councils and after them will be dealing with those challenges that face each, each municipality, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's new regulations, whether it's something that we haven't even talking about yet. We find a way and I'm confident that this council will find a way to, to move forward, whether it's stormwater, whether it's fiber, whether it's the remainder of the streetlights and fixing our streets and our sidewalks. So I think we've done the prudent thing. The, the, the challenge is staff. And I think staff, at least in my tenure, has done an exceptional job in cutting the pie, you know, the right way and allowing us to, to, to make those, those improvements without leaving one big chunk behind. Unfortunately, now we have stormwater, which we're only getting sense, you know, on, on each property. We need a big, we, we need a big infusion and that's going to be the challenge of future, the future council.
The only thing I wanted to say, Mr. O'Leary, you've been here a while, is when I came in, in '05, '06, in the other reserve funds, they were very nominal. And I think this council from then, with my two colleagues who will be leaving and former mayor Franzella and a council member then Vice Mayor Salazar, took prudent action to increase those, those reserve funds that we have not seen before and other cities do not have. So there's this one that we're dealing with, which is more of a day-to-day operational usage, but also to highlight that the other reserves, and you can correct me, where they were and where they are is night and day. And the councils have taken prudent action to ensure that they have those funds available. Won't cure everything, but when we do have a, a, something that occurs in the town that may be of, of a nature that needs immediate funds, we have some of those available, which, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but I know '05, '06, opposed to where they are today, is, is night and day. And we actually have a reserve policy and guidelines and standards, which we did not have before.
Anything else? Mr. O'Leary, thank you very much for your very thorough and concise.
Exciting.
No, it is.
Exciting for him.
Might not be, might not be exciting, but it's very important, believe me, so I, yeah.
Sobering.
Sobering, yeah. I totally agree, you know, putting off three projects, it's fine, but I agree with Ken also, what we have coming into this city with development that's on the books already and, and I'm confident a new hotel here. New hotel shortly. This is, this is really going to help our finances, so we'll have more exciting things to say in the near future. Any, any more discussion or action on this? Is there a resolution for adoption?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Please, Mayor Arbara.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.